Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 26, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on May 4, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. Note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available at the back of the chambers here. So if you are the, or if you are someone other than the applicant or the agent on those, we would ask that you fill those out. If you are the applicant or the agent on an item, it's not necessary. First item on today's agenda is roll call. Note that everyone is here, Les Kirian and Ron is here from the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the April 12, 2021 minutes. Are there any changes, corrections?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor for approval of the April 12 minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item on today's agenda is approval of the agenda. With today's agenda, we have items three and four on the consent agenda. Regular items five through 18, followed by some amendments to ordinances and comprehensive plans, 19 through 21, County Board of Report 22, and, and normal end of meeting items through item 26. Are there any changes to today's agenda?
Move, we approve the agenda for today.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Agenda approved, item three.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review, CU 9940, for George Chiolis to review a manufactured home as a ranch hand residence in a limited agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 9940, with conditions. Item number four is minor plat, MPL 21-15, for Jessica Hessler, Seven Wonders LLC. This land surveying, surveying as the agent, to combine two lots to create lot one, area of lots seven and eight of Clear Creek Plaza, MS. And staff is recommending approval of minor plat, MPL 21-15, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? For those in the audience that are new to the Planning Commission meeting, items three and four will be voted on at the same time. They're on the consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience wish item either three or four pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none, seeing none. Recommendation is for approval of items three and four on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none in the chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Item five.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit, 21-14, to allow a structure less than 20 feet wide on the subject property. The structure is a cabin. Applicants are Greg and Amy Wilson. Site location is 12748 North Prairie Creek Road. Current lot size is .68 acres. Zoning ordinance lists seven factors that the Planning Commission may consider in a review of conditional use permit applications. They are as follows. They are on the screen. At least the first four are. I'll read staff's responses to each one of those, starting with number one. The requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development of and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, an address will be assigned and adequacy of utilities will be verified during the building permit review process. Number five, the existing approach will be, will provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion onto North Prairie Creek Road. Apologize for the typo on that. And number six, the minimum dimensions of any single-family residence shall be 20 feet by 20 feet wide. And lastly, number seven, future land use is identified as rural residential. A single-family residence, is it consistent with this district? This is a site visited last week to the subject property. The proposed single-family residence will be 16 by 20 feet wide. Pennington County zoning ordinance lists the minimum dimensions for any single-family residence to be 20 feet by 20 feet. Pennington County zoning ordinance requires manufactured homes, modular homes, and stick-built homes not meeting the above standards shall obtain the conditional use permit in accordance with Section 510. Access is provided off of North Prairie Creek Road. It is within the Clear Creek Plaza Road District. There is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. Property history, the proposed structure, as you can see on the screen during my site visit, has been moved onto the subject property and obtaining a building permit, as well as a septic permit and paying any penalty fees along with that, is addressed as a condition of approval. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and no objections or concerns were received. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 2114, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jason, I thought I heard you say that, but with the building permit, there, there is a septic permit because they didn't see it in the conditions.
Right, so they'll need to get a septic permit as well before we take in a building permit?
Correct. That's, it, it kind of runs together, don't they?
Correct. Yes, it do.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience have any questions on this item? Or wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, no further questions. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 2114, with four conditions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Six.
Item number six is conditional use permit, 21-21, to allow guest house on the subject property. The applicants are Larry and Ramona Vanderzee. Site location is 11575 Deerfield Road. Current zoning is ranch district. Again, the zoning ordinance list, Section 318 lists criteria that the applicants must meet in order to allow a guest house on the subject property. At this time, the applicant's request does not meet the criteria, as the primary structure is not classified as owner occupied. And with that, staff would recommend to continue this item to the May 10 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicants time to gain owner occupied status.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Item, condition number three, it says, "The guest house shall not be used for more than 180 days." Are we going to change that eventually? We're under certain conditions, they can, that guest house can be occupied year round?
I don't believe we're looking at changing that section of the zoning ordinance. I think if anyone wants to use their guest house or accessory dwelling unit, we're going to address it underneath the proposed section for accessory dwelling units in the future.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff is recommending to continue conditional use permit, 21-21. Is there a specified date to the next meeting?
May 10th.
May 10th?
Sure.
Thank you. To the May 10th meeting, is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and second, further discussion?
Just one discussion. Jason, doesn't it appear the way our ordinance is written, they actually have to live here in the guest house? Then if it's owner occupied, in other words, if somebody lives somewhere else, even in Rapid City, you can't have owner occupied in both locations. Is that not correct?
I'd have to verify that with equalization, but I believe that you can only have owner occupied status on one house in any state.
Yes.
Yeah. So if they're out of state and have owner occupied on another residence, then they can't have it on this one here.
The way our ordinance is written.
I believe, I would have to follow up with equalization, but I'm pretty sure that's what it works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colin, do you have more to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson, excuse me. Under state law, a person can only have owner occupied status on one property. So if it's somewhere else, so let's say hypothetically, I want to have a guest house out here in the hills, and I live in Watertown, I have owner occupied status in Watertown. I couldn't get it out here in the hills. And the way that's communicated back and forth is from the director of equalization for Cottington would call Pennington, and that's how they would figure it out. I believe it's a class one or two misdemeanor. And then the other penalty is they're disgorged of that status, and then they have to pay a fine, and then they can't get owner occupied status for three years. So it is kind of a big deal. And whether, I would have to take a look at the ordinance too, and then speak with Shannon. But state law does require one. I don't know what specifically our ordinance says, so.
I looked it up. It says that they got to be owner occupied, which means they can't have it unless they're living here, it would appear to me. That's why I brought it up. When I read it, there was a direct conflict, I felt, between the ordinance and, and this request. And these folks needed to know, I was hoping they weren't here. Thank you.
Further questions? Further discussion? Motion is on the floor for approval to continue this to the May 10 Planning Commission meeting. Of any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven.
Agenda item number seven is layout plan 21-14 to gray lots 23 through 29, East half-vacated alley adjacent to lots, block three of Silver City subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Don Elliott. Site location is 307 Sherman Street in Silver City. Proposed lot size is .91 acres, and it is zone suburban residential district. There are two tax IDs the applicant is looking to combine. First one is .46 acres. It is vacant, but it does contain a proposed onsite wastewater treatment system. Second one is .45 acres, and, or it is vacant right now, but there is a proposed single-family residence under building permit, 21-0177. Access to both lots is provided via Sherman Street. There's no special flood hazard area on the subject properties. Again, the proposed lot will be .91 acres. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Department of Equalization had an issue with the legal description, the proposed legal description, and they would like to see that described more or less as a lot, like a single lot versus the lots 23 through 29. And that is included as a condition of approval. With that, applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of layout plan 2114 with conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Staff recommends approval of layout plan, LPL 2114, with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eight.
Good morning, Commissioner Shutiima Saboon, Planning Department. Item agenda, I'm sorry, agenda item number eight is conditional use permit, 2113, to leave in an existing residence while build, while building a new single-family residence, and to allow the existing resident to remain as a ranch hand residence. The applicant and landowner is Heath Freeman. He is here in the audience, if you have any question. The site location is at 23050 175th Avenue, Awanka, South Dakota. The, the subject property is the 480 acres zone agriculture district. Conditional use decided under Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section 510, must meet the following criteria. Criteria number one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Criteria number two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal ordinary development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria number four, access will be off of the existing approach from 175th Avenue. The applicant plans to install a new onsite wastewater treatment system for the proposed single-family residence. Water will be provided via an existing private well. Criteria number five, yes, the requested use is a residential use. The closest residence is approximately 1.5 mile away from the subject, property, not the residence. I'm sorry, I misspelled it. Therefore, it should not affect traffic congestion in the area. Criteria number six, yes, the current zoning, the current zoning is an agriculture district. A ranch hand residence is an allow use on the zoning district, and the subject property also taxed as agriculture. However, the requirement for the ranch hand residence is that it has to be a modular or mobile home to be a temporarily. However, the existing houses, house that will remain on the property is a stick build. Therefore, it requires a condition, an approved conditional use permit. Criteria number seven, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district. This conditional use is consistent with the current competency plan. Department of Equalization records show the existing, the existing residents and other structure on the property were built prior 1994. No, therefore, no building permit is required. And there is a pole barn, 30, 30 feet by 56, was built in 2018 via the building permit, COBP 180561. For the, for the onsite wastewater treatment system, there is no information about it and, and also the operating permit, because the existing resident was built prior 1994. And the subject property is also exempt for the operating permit under Section 204J4. The applicants also, like I mentioned before, that the applicant will install a new onsite wastewater treatment system for the, the new house. There is no special flood hazard on the subject property. The request was routed to, to County Highway Department, Emergency Services, County Fire Administrator, County Planning, and County Ordinance Enforcement Officer. There is no significant concerns or objection to this conditional use permit request were received. On April 12, 2021, staff performed a site visit and spoke with the applicant. During the conversation, the applicant informed staff that he does not want to keep the existing residence as a ranch hand residence. He will be demolishing it after the completion of the new residence. Staff find no significant issue with the applicant's request, as it appeared to be in harmony with existing lots and current land use in the, in the area. At the time of writing this staff report, staff has received, had received no complaints or concern regarding the subject property or conditional, or the requested use. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CU 2113, with seven conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? Go ahead, Kevin.
I just want to clarify. So this conditional use permit that's, that's here for us to take action on is just, just addresses living in the existing residence until the new residence is built. It doesn't address the ranch hand issue, because now that has been moved aside?
Um, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for staff on this item? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 2113, with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nine.
This is for conditional use permit, CU 2115, to allow a garage as a primary structure on the subject property. The applicants and landowners are Quinton and Sherry Strand. The site location is directly south of the applicant's residence at 2251 Nifon Drive. The subject property is 1.03 acre zone rural residential district. The, the subject property is considered illegal non-conforming due to the size to the current zoning district. Conditional use permit criteria. Criteria number one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public, public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria number two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should, should not affect the normal ordinary development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria number four, yes, the access is off of Nifon Drive. The proposed garage will be an open space to store vehicles without leaving quarter and bathroom. Criteria number five, yes, the requested use is for personal use only and no commercial type use. Due to the nature of the requested use, it should not significantly impact traffic volume in the neighborhood. Criteria number six, yes, the current zoning, the current zoning is, I'm sorry, I, I put in the wrong information. So the current zoning is rural residential district. Accessory structure prior to primary structure is allowed through and approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, yes, the future land use of the property is also, is a rural residential district. Therefore, this conditional use permit is consistent with the current competency plan. The access, access is off of Nifon Drive. Plan book 13, page 247, shows Nifon Drive as an existing U.S. Forest Service road. There is no special flood hazard on the subject property. This, the, the request was routed for comments. Emergency service has a concern about the road sign. And that is a street, a roadside of Nifon Drive of Broad Ford. Regarding the address posting, this will be addressed as a condition of approval. No significant concerns or, or objections to the conditional use permit per, request were received from other departments. On April 21, 2021, staff spoke with the applicant Quinton Strand regarding his conditional use permit request, and Mr. Strand is in the audience, so if you have any question. So that is an existing detached garage on the property. This, this existing garage was built prior to 1994. Therefore, no building permit is required. The applicant's plan to remove it in a couple years. The proposed garage will be on the west side of the subject property. And it will be for personal use to store applicant vehicles. On April 22, 22, on April 22, 2021, staff received a phone call from the applicant's neighbor concerning the size of the proposed garage. Staff called the applicant regarding to decide, and he said that it will be 24 foot by 45 foot garage. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 2115, with nine conditions.
Thank you. I'll start. So when the neighbor called asking about, they just wanted to know what, what it was about?
Yes.
So they, they didn't have any concerns once you told them how big the garage was?
Um, they concerned that the property is only one acre. And the garage, at that time, I told the neighbor that I didn't know the size of the, of the, the garage. So I told her that the conditional use permit request, this one is for the use, request for the use. For the size of the proposed garage will be addressed during the building permit process.
Okay.
Yep.
As well as setbacks from the property line, et cetera?
Yes, and he will meet the, according to the applicant, he will meet the setback of the, the required, the required setback of the current zoning district.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Further questions? Go ahead.
So the acres, 4,000, or 43,560 square feet, the footprint of this proposed building is 1,000 square feet, so I think we can meet setbacks.
I would think so, too.
Yes. Further questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff's recommendation for approval of conditional use permit, 2115, with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 10.
Item, item 10 is conditional use permit, CU 2119, to temporarily leave in, in a recreational vehicle while building a cabin on the subject property. The applicants, the applicants and landowners are Boy and Sabrina Knusson. Mr. Knusson is on Zoom, so if you have any question for him. The, the subject property is 1.06 acres, and the current zoning is rural residential district. The. The subject property is considered legal non-conforming because of the size of the Condition, uh, criteria for approving conditional use permit. Criteria number one, uh, yes, it appears that by allowing this conditional use, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the pub- of the public. Criteria number two, yes, the nature of the requested use is temporary. It should not have any long-term negative effects on the, on the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the im- immediate vicinity. The applicant stated that his living activities are limited to normal activities of the property's homeowner association. Criteria number three, yes, the applicant stated that, stated that his living activity are also limited to the normal activity of the property HOA. Allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding properties. Criteria number four, yes, access will be off of Pactola Drive per the applicant's site plan. The applicant's RV does not have a bathroom, there will be no wastewater. The applicants also apply for a separate conditional use permit to build um a bath house. The onsite wastewater treatment system will be addressed with that conditional use permit. Criteria number five, yes, the requested use is to live in an RV while building a cabin. Essentially, it's a residential use, which is temporarily until the cabin is finished. The, the RV, the RV will be parked on the subject property during the up, the cabin's construction because the applicant resides on the east side of the state. Due to the nature of the requested use, it should not significantly im- impact traffic volume in the neighborhood. Criteria number six, yes, the current zoning, uh, it is rural residential district. The nature of the request, uh, request, requested use is temporarily. Temporarily use is allowed in this district with an, an approved conditional use permit per um section two oh four C. Criteria number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district. This conditional use permit request is consistent with the co- um current comprehensive plan. The subject property is vacant of any structure. The request was loud routed to um, um, other department for comment. Pactola State, uh, Pactola State Road District. Um, the president said that he had no issue with, with the built or RV used, and he has a question that did, um, the, did Mr. Knusson get clear for drain field close to the road, lot line? And how about the bill on the limited agricultural land? Has grandfather, um, grand, grandfathering been settled? Otherwise, he has no concern for Mr. Knusson's as long as it, it says that allowable presi- uh precedent, uh precedent. Um, for the first question, uh, from the road district president, um, the applicant, Mr. Knusson, provided an approval letter from the state granting that his proposed drain field to be two feet off of ten feet from the property, property line. However, there is a six-feet utility easement on his, on his property, which he either must meet the di- that distance or request of vacation, uh, vacation or utility easement. The applicant emailed the planning department stating that he, his proposed drain field will be outside of the utility easement. So this is the, uh, RV, um, from, the picture from Mr. Knusson. Um, staff has worked with the applicant, and Mr. Knusson provided a site plan for the conditional use permit. Um, on April sixteen, twenty twenty-one, staff performed a site visit and found that the RV was parked on the subject property, and the property is vacant of any structure. Staff has not received any complaints regarding the subject property or the requested use. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one nineteen with eleven conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, this would apply to the number eleven that's coming up too.
Yes, yes, also the same.
I see, a- and we've kind of used this, and I haven't said anything, but in the old days, we did it a little different, like condition number four, that an approved onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit be obtained prior to the installation of any onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. We used to have something that that had to be done in advance, or arrangements for a tank, or a porta potty, or something, so that we had that prior to. Right now, the way I see it, they don't have any commitment to do that in advance of them beginning out of these temporary structures that they bring in. And if we don't include some wording to that, that they know that that's got to be on the front end. And I realize it's, it's, it's cumbersome for them to select a location, but it does make them cognizant of the problems that you have. You can't run over it with the driveway, uh, you have soils and perk and things you got to pass, but it's still important that this be in place for these, the bath house or, or RVs, whoever it is, not just Mr. Knutson. And I don't see that anymore in these uh advanced conditions. Is that something we're not doing anymore, I guess?
Um, Commissioner Johnson, we were, have been working with Mr. Knutson for quite a while. He's done his profile holes. Um, he's been working with our onsite wastewater staff and our environmental planners.
I did see where he admitted that he's going to put this in in advance, but we don't really have it in that they have to do that. People could sidestep that if they wanted to.
Um, could they, well, typically, they don't, but um we do have the review process, and if they're not in, um, this one is a little different because he is building a bath house, um, that will cert- that the wastewater treatment system will serve. Um, so when he submits his building permit for that bath house, that will come, um, that permit application will come. The onsite.
But the same condition is in number eleven that's in here, so I guess I'd have the same concern. We don't ever say, come right out and say, you've got to do this in advance if we're going to agree under our ordinances for a temporary structure. And, and then I don't have any big hangup.
Right. The only other way to handle that was that, that they would have to put the onsite wastewater treatment system before they even applied for the conditional use permit, um, which that would be diff- I mean, so it's kind of one of those things, is it in before, or is it in?
Uh, they know they have to have it, plus they can start out with a porta potty like other people do too, you know? And we actually, uh, went, in the old days, they actually built some holding tanks to, to use, uh, and we would have them send in the pumping, uh, things, but I see that's not, I, I'm just concerned that people can sidestep, and I'm not saying the majority of people, you have that, that element that wants to sidestep, that, or, uh, what would I say, uh, what we do as far as zoning. And, and it leaves that door open, and it'd be simple to close. I don't think they've got to do it before they do the conditional use permit, but once they get the conditional use permit, I do feel that they should know that that's the first thing they're going to do.
Right, and to, and, in all honesty, we've probably had one in the last, I don't know, couple of years at all that we've had issues with them not putting in the system. So, out of all, all of all of them, that this board has heard, so.
Do you have any suggestions, Charlie?
I still have problems with, I think we need to be more specific in our conditions of what we expect. And if we do expect it, and they go ahead, this gentleman volunteered to do it, I mean, in his own right, uh, and which could be from conversations, we don't know, but as board members, I'm just saying, there, there's, people can sidestep that and say, I'll do it when I want to, when I'm going to build the place.
Make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're saying that you would put something in, uh, along the lines of applicant shall install onsite wastewater treatment system within X number of days of approval of?
And go through the permit process, which he's going to have to, he or she's going to have to go do anyway, uh, to get a building permit eventually.
Well, the building permit will definitely cue that.
It's just something that I, I just feel is necessary. So again, we're telling the people that are working under these regulations what we expect. We may have told them in conversation, don't get me wrong, I, I have all the confidence in you folks, but then they have an idea that this is very important, and this is a requirement.
Would you like to put a Tom, um, Tom live for the applicant?
No, I think we're all right on this one, because you do have in writing that he's volunteering to do this in advance of the bath house.
Okay. Yep, and, uh, Mr. Knusson, um, um, gave us a plan. He has been contacted, um, um, Aaron, uh, our septic person, and also the state, and also the army, uh, Department of, uh, the Corps of Engineer also.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval.
Thank you.
Um, is there further discussion? We did have the owner, um, or the applicants on, on a Zoom call, do they have anything to add before we vote on item ten?
I, I have a question. So do, I understand that he's going to live in not the RV, but this prefab bath house that there's a picture of, is that correct?
Um, no, no. Um, he has, we have worked together, and at first, he does so many proposed uses that Mr. Knusson would like to do. Um, and so that's, he would, um, he planned to live in the bath house to have, but either way, he need a conditional use permit, um, to live in a bath house or to ha- to live in the, uh, um, an RV, which the, we have talked to him, and we told him what would he, what, what he need to do. Um, but if he put a living quarter in the bath house, that will be a, a primary structure. Um, but when he finished his cabin, that living quarter in the bath house need to be removed anyway, so.
So the bath house will be hooked up to a septic system?
Yes, yes, the bath house will be, um, will be.
That's, that's in the next issue, but, uh, so, so clearly, there will be a waste system in place, he will drop this bath house, which will double as sleeping quarters and sanitary?
Uh, no, he will not leave, he will not have any living quarter in the bath house. He will live in the RV while building a cabin.
Okay.
The bath house, it does be a bath house for.
Originally, he acted like he couldn't live in the RV because it was going to be filled with tools, et cetera, so, but he is going to.
He will live in the RV, yeah.
I'm just concerned for, it's rather confusing. And then what happens after he's done with, uh, the structure? Does the bath house stay there, or?
Um.
Is it, um, become a storage shed, or, or do we, is that relevant?
Um, that, so the bath house will be an accessory structure on the property. Um, we put a condition on the, the next conditional use permit, there will be no living space, so it can be a bath house or a storage there.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And with his plan, he, the applicant, Mr. Knusson?
Yes, I'm here. Hello?
Hi. Would you like to, um, give Ms., uh, Commissioner Coleman, um, some detail of your plan?
Sure. Some of the confusion was, uh, just trying to figure out the best avenue forward, but what I am applying for is to live in the RV. It does not have a bathroom necess- which necessitated the bath house.
Okay, yeah. I understand that, okay. I, I think I'm, I think I'm clear on what you're going to do.
Okay.
I, I wish you the best. But anyway, yes, I am now clear.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, motion for approval of conditional use permit twenty-one nineteen with eleven conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eleven.
Sorry. Item eleven is a conditional use permit twenty-one, uh, twenty, is to allow a bath house as a primary structure on the property. Um, the applicants and landowner, also Mr. Um, Boy and Sabrina Knusson. Um, so with the, uh, criteria for approving conditional use permits, um, criteria number one, uh, yes, it will, it will appear that allowing this conditional use permit, uh, it should not if, should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria number two, it should not have any long-term negative effects on the, on the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity. And cri- criteria number three, the applicant stated that his, uh, living activities are limited to normal activities of the property's homeowner association. Allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly, uh, development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria number four, access will be off of Pactola, uh, Drive per the applicant's site plan. The applicant's RV from the, uh, other conditional use permit does not have a bathroom, and there will be no, uh, wastewater, uh. The applicant applied for this conditional use permit to build a bath house, and he will install a, a new onsite wastewater, uh, treatment system and con- connect the bath house, um, to that. Uh, criteria number five, the requested use is to build a bath house prior to the principal structure, um, the cabin, um, essentially is a residential use. The requested use should not significantly impact traffic volume in the nebo- in the neighborhood. Criteria number six, the current zoning is a rural residential district. Accessory structure prior, um, prior to primary structure is allowed through and approved conditional use permit. Criteria number seven, the sub- the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district. This conditional use permit request is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. And on this one, it's a site plan that show that the applicant bath house will be twenty-five feet of the rural, uh, of the property line, and the dr- the drain field, uh, the proposed drain field will be right here. And applicant also, um, have it in writing that his proposed drain field and onsite wastewater system will meet the, with the location and sizing requirement, um, um, from us, from the Pennington County, uh, zoning ordinance, and also he received, uh, variance, uh, the approval letter from the state of, um, D, um, the South Dakota DNR, um, to allow the drain field will be two feet instead of ten feet, and also he, uh, stated that the set, he will, uh, his drain field will meet the six foot utility easement. And this is a picture that Mr. Knusson, uh, sent the planning department, this is will be his bath house. And, um, on April sixteen, twenty twenty-one, staff performed a site visit and found that, um, the subject property is vacant of any structure, and that's an RV parked there. Um, staff has not received any complaints regarding the subject property or the requested use. Staff recommends approval with eight conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I, I don't mean to be a stick in the mud on this, but can you go back to the, the layout sketch? Um, one of the things there, it looks like his drain field is running the other way, not alongside the, the. alongside the, the property line to need the two feet, uh, in the setback requirement, but it just, I noticed that when I was looking at, in other words, it's, it's laid out where it wouldn't need the two feet. It's heading the other direction on the property, but I, I'm just pointing that out. But I don't mean to be a stick in the mud, but we're the same way. He has, the way you read, the way this is written, again, this is condition number two. He per se can get a one person and a bath house type of septic permit. We're not tying it to the house or that it has to be, go along with the building permit for the house, that sort of thing. And that's where I'm coming from. I think we need to be more specific to these people doing these projects, so they know. But again, that, that drawing doesn't depict it. And I was surprised to see, does the state of South Dakota control setback requirements? That they can authorize that on that? Thank you. I was really surprised at it. Never seen that before, where they authorized to, uh, install within setback requirements. But his field must be gone the other way if he's going two feet. Pointing, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my question is only, is in regards to the letter in here from the Corps of Engineers. What is the purpose for him to relocate 200 feet of Prairie Creek?
We'll need Brittany to help me on this one.
Oh, yes, and Mr. Knudsen is on the.
Yeah. Mr. Knudsen, maybe you can answer that question. What is the, what, what is the need to relocate Prairie Creek?
The, uh, to, in order to meet a 100-foot setback from septic to a waterway, uh, I need to reroute the creek or protect it, um, so that I can put a septic on the property at all. Basically with different poles dug, uh, that corner of the property is the only approved location for a septic drain field. Um, and it's as far away from the creek as I can get it. Therefore, what I proposed to do was place the creek into a culvert or I did get approval to put it in a channel, a steel channel, which is a three-sided channel, um, until it was 100 feet away from the corner of the drain field. So that's what that was about.
Got it. Thank you very much. Further questions on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of conditional use permit 21-20 with eight conditions. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 12.
Cody, Sack, environmental planner. Item 12 is conditional use permit CU 21-16. It's to allow caretakers residence on the subject property.
All right.
The applicant is Kyle Brown. Staff recommends.
Mr. Knudsen, could you, uh, hang up? Go ahead, proceed, Cody. Sorry about that.
Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit CU 21-16 to the May 10th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, as the applicant did not send the notice letter by the required deadline.
Which meeting, Cody? What meeting?
To the, uh, May 10th Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions on this item? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, staff recommends to contin, continue conditional use permit 2116 to the May 10th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item 13.
Item 13 is conditional use permit CU 21-17. It's to allow a shop building prior to a primary structure. That is William Barber, he is in the audience if there's any questions. The property is sized 1.49 acres and is currently ranch at District. When approving conditional, oh, staff recommends approval of conditional use permits CU 21-17 with seven, with 10 conditions. When approving conditional use permits, permits, there are seven criteria that we look at. Number one, yes, a shop building should not be detrimental or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, a shop building is a residential use and thus should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects and use of enjoyment on other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, allowing conditional use permit should not affect the orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Number four, utilities are not required for a shop building and access to the properties via approach off Dark Canyon Road. Number five, access to the property is via an approach off Dark Canyon Road. Number six, the current zoning is ranch at District. Shop buildings before a primary structure are allowed in the district with a conditional use permit. And number seven, the future land use of the property is ranch at District, which allows for a single family. Residence has a primary use, shop buildings are a secondary use that is allowed through a conditional use permit. Uh, currently, the lot is vacant of any structures. There is special flood hazard area on the property, 100-year flood plain. However, the applicant's proposed shop will be out of the flood hazard area. Staff has received no co, uh, complaints about this request, so again, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 21-17 with 10 conditions.
Thank you. Questions on this item for staff?
I have a question. Um, so this is a shop just for his own personal use, is that right?
Uh, correct. He lives, uh, just down the road and he's putting the shop building there. I don't know if he has future plans to put a house there or not, um, but currently he's just.
He's not going to operate a business out of there or anything?
No.
Further questions for staff? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, uh, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2117 with 10 conditions. Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 14.
Item 14 is conditional use permit 21-18. It is to allow a temporary campground slash assembly of people on the, on the subject property for four days during the month of July. The applicant is Lowell Cobb. He is in the audience if there's any questions. The property is 30 acres, uh, currently zoned agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 21-18 with 14 conditions. When approving conditional use permits, we look at seven criteria. Number one, the temporary campground is for four days a year and should not be, should not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, the campground is temporary in nature and thus should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, allowing the conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of the surrounding vacant property in the area. Number four, the property is served by private septic system and receives water from the Pine Grove Water Association. Access to the property will be provided via an access easement off of Stoneridge Road. Uh, number five, access to the property will be provided off Stoneridge Road. Number six, the current zoning is agriculture district. Temporary campgrounds are allowed in the district with a conditional use permit. Number seven, the future land use of the property is agriculture district, which allows for temporary campgrounds through a conditional use permit. Uh, currently, there is a single-family residence on the property and, uh, onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, access is off of an, uh, easement off Stoneridge Road. There is no special flood hazard area. Uh, this was routed for climate, there's no major comments received or concerned. Uh, the applicant Lowell Cobb has requested a conditional use permit to allow temporary campgrounds, um, or assembly of people on the subject property. The campground will operate for four days in July. It will start roughly around 4:00 PM Friday and the last, uh, attendant, attendees will be gone by noon on Tuesday. The camp is for a church outing, a Bible study camp. Uh, the max number of attendees is 75 people. I think they average 35 to 40, but there can be a max of 75. Uh, it's mainly kids. Parking is provided on the property. Uh, staff has contacted the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Who said the applicant will need to pump the onsite wastewater treatment system before the camp begins and once during the camp. Um, sta, staff is also placing a condition that a porta potty be placed on the property for the duration of the camp. Uh, the applicant has obtained a permit with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture, Wildlife and Fire Division for a fire pit. Uh, the camp is conducted every July since 2017 with no complaints filed from the surrounding property owners. Uh, staff did receive one objection from the neighbor who received a notice letter. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 21-18 with 14 conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one, and, and we had one of these here a couple of months back, um, for out near Quinn or something like that. And, and I had the same concern on that one and she had a lot more campers, RVs and tents in mind than we had thought. And I, I wonder whether we should include that sort of thing in these. It says mostly kids, but then we've got, uh, campers, RVs and tents involved and we don't say how many, uh, of those is going to be committed to this same permit. That's my only concern, Cody.
I guess I would have to ask the applicant on how many campers and.
Yeah.
Like actual campers.
I think that guy wanted 200 in the total or something, didn't she? For the.
Correct, but that was, that was a.
That was an exceptional thing because of the attendance.
Yeah, and that was a specialty resort that ran for, um, from May to September, October. This is just for four days, um, of the year.
Again, i, that, in a neighborhood, I'm just saying, especially, she was out quite a ways and it didn't concern me when you could have a total of 200, that's, and two, well, it's like 400 people. And that was in the range of, of what we were thinking, but, uh, when we're in and more, i, if we're in around more houses, I think we do have to look at how many tents, how many RVs, how many campers. I don't know. It's, it's your choice. You guys do the inspection on these things, but I, again, I think it, it gives a better direction to us on this, on me, uh, uh, voting one way or the other. Thank you.
Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, you know, I, I think Charlie's right, but we rely on the neighbors to be our eyes and ears and if there's a problem in terms of the impact on, on folks in that area, we'll probably hear about it. It sounds like the one neighbor who was, was very enthusiastic about this and they've done it repeatedly, so there's been much opportunity and they've also done it without permits, as I understand it, but have obviously done it well enough not to incur the discomfort or wrath of their neighbors. I, I think there's probably, but I know what Charlie's saying, that we, we do, we aren't going to be on premises, but, um, we rely on their good judgment and the neighbors, I think, so. Anyway, that was my only concern and so I would support this.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Uh, you know, I think that's really something we should consider, uh, limiting the number of camping units per se, because the people are limited and that's based upon what the applicant, uh, indicated to you that his plans were. And so it just strikes me is that, uh, we could learn from the applicant, you know, how many camping units he anticipates, whether they be tents, whether they be RVs, whether they be, you know, um, whatever the campus, whatever they might be, and, and put a limit in it the same way that the, the people have, you know, limited to a certain number. I, I think that would be wise.
Any reason for limiting the camping units would be?
Well, the, the, I mean, the real reason, I mean, cause, I mean, I re, you know, reading through this, I realized that one concern that the neighbor has is the roads. And we talked about this, you know, two, a month ago, whenever it was, when there was the applicant for the, um.
Bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast. And, and there's no question, this, this road is narrow and I don't know, I've not driven it, if it's narrow in just some spots or if it's, the whole road is narrow, but and, and so I, I'm wrestling with this, I will say, because having big RVs come down this road, it's, it's just, I mean, I don't think this road width-wise is really designed for RVs or large campers or something. And, and then I start, you know, being a little bit thinking, well, okay, so 75 people, uh, you know, maybe like four people, that's, you know, eight camping units, let's say. And it's, and, and so, you know, people that can be polite and allow for them to pass and so on and can get by without any accidents, but the more camping units come down that road, the greater the, the probability that there could be some sort of incident, because I mean, true, clearly this road is not designed for an RV to travel. And so I, I do think there's a, a point here where, um, if, if this is, if this is a road to, um, you know, property owners that use their property for, um, you know, gas and so on, I, it, this road may not be, may need improvement. I mean, it just might need improvement. And on the other hand, you think, if I lived at the end of the road and I wanted to have a party, I could invite anybody I wanted to, to have a party and there could be all kinds of cars going down there, uh, for a Sunday afternoon gathering. So I'm, I, I just, I'm, I'm on, I, I don't have a clear sense of, of, of where this should go, but I do think at some point, the narrowness of this road, you know, needs to be, you know, talked about and, and thought about. And so that's what, that's really why I was thinking, well, if we, if we limited the number of camping units, we could really kind of get our, we could put some boundaries around how many of these big, um, and, and I don't even know if they're that big necessarily, but potentially big units that could come in and out.
From, from my understanding, it's, it's tent sites. Um, I guess the applicant could, um, delve more into that, but is that, is that what you're kind of saying is limit, limit it to tent sites, no campers, no RVs?
Well, that would, that would certainly help the road situation, but I thought, I thought I read that is, uh, somewhere tents, campers, RVs. Didn't I, did I make a mistake there?
Didn't see that.
Any applicants in the, on the audience, I'm filling out a speaker request form, so he'll be able to answer those questions.
He'll be able to answer. I, I thought I read that somewhere, that, um.
I guess, I guess the, the picture that he did submit, there does appear to be one pop-up camper.
Okay. Maybe that's where I gathered that information then from the photograph, but in any case, I think it warrants some discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Uh, Cody, in the, I think there's a, photos of the two trucks on the, I don't call that a road, I call it a driveway, but, uh, what's the nature of those photos?
Uh, that, that came from the applicant. Um, I, I guess I'm not sure how that came about. I don't know if they, they parked it there to take those pictures or if that was them coming down the road and met and got out to take pictures, so, um, that'd be up for the, the neighbor to.
I, I, I read that, that they came from Mr. Brice Meister, but not the applicant.
Oh, sorry, it came, it came from the neighbor, yeah, sorry, not the applicant. It came from the, the neighbor who was opposed to the request.
So this property, is this at the end of a driveway, more or less? So, I mean, it doesn't go through, they have to go down, turn around if they want to leave and come back? They just, they can't, it's not a through corridor, right?
No, this is the, the, the road for, Stoneridge Road comes, comes down here. It, it kind of comes down like this and the access is, I think there's three.
So if there was an instant, and is there a second, no second means of, uh, egress?
No.
Further questions for staff on this item?
So the terrain appears to be essentially flat, like a valley almost. The road does not seem to have, I mean, it seems to, the, the shoulder, there isn't a shoulder, I see, but the, the ground is fairly level. In other words, it would be easy to avoid another vehicle by pulling off to one side. Uh, and it seems to me that this is not going to be a circumstance in which people are going to be coming and going a great deal. I mean, this is not like if you were going to have an event and everybody arrived in a car or some kind of a vehicle, then they left and came back and left and came back. My impression is it's sort of a, a religious gathering in which people are going to spend most of their time in the quiet of the woods and this is not going to be, and that, so if, if we had constant traffic, that would be different.
So from my understanding, what the applicant submitted was that on Saturday, um, they'll wake up, uh, have a breakfast, I think a Bible devotion, and then they would leave for the day and go out in other areas of the hills, um, and then they'd come back in the afternoon, have dinner, another Bible devotion, have a movie. Um, Sunday, they stay onsite all day for a, a Bible devotion and like a church service and potluck. And then Monday is exactly like Saturday and Tuesday morning, they get up, have breakfast and leave.
Yeah, if, if there's. Yeah, if, if there's constant traffic and going in and coming back and all that, then this becomes a little more problematic. I appreciate that. But, I mean, if that's a problem, that would imply the road itself needs to be improved now, if that's, if, if that is an objection. I mean, it seems to me in the woods, this happens often, you stop, the other guy goes around, you know, it's not that big a deal. But if this became a, a much bigger event, and if there was lots of activity and coming and going, then I, I think I can appreciate that. It could be problematic for sure. But it, so the applicant is here?
Yes, yes.
Further questions for staff before we move on to the speaker request forms?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, because for forty years, I've taken care of a road similar. What you're talking about is correct, Jim, but in the right road conditions, and, and by that, that's moisture, that's the problem that'll catch you. You go to pass, and depending on the capability of the driver, it can suck you right down in there and you're done. And just to show you, just this year already, I've pulled out a UPS truck and a delivery truck for gas to, to a house at the same thing, because they couldn't pass each other on a road, just like that sucked them right down in the ditch, I had to pull them both out. So that can happen in the right moisture conditions, even with a good driver, so there are difficulties passing in that width.
Even so, it seems to me it's a matter of an inconvenience, not a potential harm. I mean, there's an inconvenience of getting stuck on the shoulder of a road, for sure.
But to give you an idea, there was nowhere for either one of these to back up, so they were committed. And that was just in daily traffic. It had nothing to do with other than moisture conditions, so it does present a problem to those folks, and they've got to be careful in their execution of passing it. But it can suck you down where you're done, right now.
And then I did forget to mention that there was, the neighbor to the east did send in a, a letter to staff in favor of the, of the request. I forgot to mention that.
Thank you. Further questions for staff before we move on to speaker request forms? Okay, first speaker request form we have is Patrick Brice Meister. Sure if you want to come up and.
Can I ask you a question?
You can, that's fine. Next request is Lowell Cole.
I am the applicant and property owner. I'm here to answer questions. I have no specific need to, to address you right now. I do have a question about one of the conditions, and that was the pumping out the septic tank during the camp. Would you mind scrolling down to that?
Cody, can you bring that up?
I don't, the, the septic system?
Yeah.
The picture of the septic?
Oh, not the picture, the, there's, one of the requirements for the permit was.
Condition number six.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't have it on, on here. I have it right there.
Right.
It just says prior to the start of the camp and on the second day of the camp.
Okay. My problem is the second day of the camp is Sunday, and I wonder if it would be okay to have it on Monday morning. I don't have a problem with that condition, except the day. I don't, I don't know how I could get somebody to come out and pump out my septic on a Sunday.
We'd have to confirm that with D and R, that the third day would be okay, because they're the ones who came in and said second day would be allowed. So we just have to check with them.
Okay.
And I'm available for any questions. I'm not sure that there are any right now still hanging.
Good, Kathy.
Mr. Cole, I would like to ask a question, and that is regarding the anticipation of, you know, larger camping units, like RVs or large campers, or do they, do they come in, do they, or is it really just tents?
Typically, it's a mix of camper trailers and tents. We have had, one year we had two RVs on-site.
Okay.
And they were parked up next to the shop, where the ground is more level and et cetera.
Okay. So really, you, you want to, you want to have, have the opportunity for those kinds of vehicles to come in?
Yes, ma'am, that was, that's why it was included in the list.
Excuse me?
That's why that was included in the list.
Okay, so.
Shall I take off this mask so you can hear?
Oh, that's all right. But, so in other words, there is, is somewhere in here where there's a list that includes the tents, RVs and campers? Okay, that's what I thought, somewhere in here that I read that, so, okay. Okay. And regarding the traffic comings and goings, people arrive on Friday, on Saturday they depart and go explore the hills, essentially. And then on Sunday, do additional people come on Sunday for your, for your potluck and so on?
Yes, additional members of the, of the church come on and join us for that.
Okay, so additional, and then on Monday too, that's a day where people depart and go exploring, and then on Tuesday, all the camping vehicles clear out.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, there is a fair amount of traffic coming and going.
There are, but they, these are group outings, so not, you don't have all of the vehicles on the, in the parking lot, that's the parking lot. They don't all leave on the, the Monday and the Saturday when they're going touring, because they, they, you know, they fill up a vehicle.
Right, of course.
And they minimize the number of vehicles that are going.
Right, yeah, okay. Very good, thank you.
Okay. One thing about, there is a concern about turning around. You can see where the, the vehicles are parked, that's the upper meadow. That meadow is solid. We have, there's also a young lady that keeps a horse on her property, and she brings out a, a bale every once in a while. Well, she had a horse and a cow and a calf and a donkey at one time. And during the winter, she would bring out a huge bale, and it had a, a truck, a duly truck designed for that. And it routinely pulled through the meadow there, all kinds of weather, the, the sod is solid enough that that doesn't even sink in. So I don't think we'd have, and the road, Stoneridge Road is in the same meadow, essentially, so we don't have the problem of people sinking in when they're not on the, on the gravel surface.
If I remember from a few weeks ago, on a different topic, the, regarding the road, was my understanding that there's only a certain corner or area of this, your, your guys' driveway or your, your common road into your location that has this narrow spot? Is that, is that the case, or is the majority of the road this width?
Okay, get comfortable. We, my wife is the secretary treasurer of the, the road district, and she also volunteers at School of Mines. Found out that the Civil and Environmental Engineering Department has student teams that do senior design projects. And so they made arrangement, there was a team of students that came out and surveyed all of the, the road district, not just Stoneridge Road, but all the, the complete, is that Natty Pine Road District? And they will be giving their recommendations on a Zoom call on May fourth or fifth, and the, the officers of the road, road district are invited to attend to that and hear what recommendations they came up with. And Mr. Brice Meister is vice president of the road district, he of course will be invited as well. But just last night, my wife, since he is secretary treasurer and also the person that requested, got a preliminary, got some preliminary information from the, the student team. And Stoneridge Road has like three places where the road proper, I mean, the, the gravel is, the least one was like fourteen point one feet, or, and there's one fourteen point nine. So there are some places where that road is, is narrow, okay? But the easement is twenty feet, so it's a, a matter of, the road is, okay, country roads tend to degrade down to a single lane, because if the, the residents will drive right up the middle, if there's no reason to pass anyone. And then the grass, you know, moves in to where they're not driving. I don't know if this road was ever twenty feet wide or filled to complete easement, but right now it clearly does not. But we do exactly what you, what you said. On rare occasions, when you meet someone, typically both parties look for a place to pull, pull over, and the first one that finds one pulls over and stops, and the other one drives by. But we do have the, the road district has the option of improving that section of the road, and there are members who would contribute out of their own pockets, you know, above and beyond the, the money that the county gives to the road district for normal maintenance, if it was, if it seemed fit to improve that road. Now, in terms of, well, we could probably get it wider by July, if that, if it was necessary for this camp. But I wonder if the road district is going to think it worthwhile to invest very much money in this road because of a camp that happens four days every July? Assuming that you're, okay, it won't happen this year if you guys don't approve the conditional use permit. And I'm here to apologize to you for not knowing about the need for a conditional use permit for the first three years that we operated it. Fortunately, one of our neighbors informed us that, that, you know, that we are operating outside the, the limits of the local statutes, and so we're here to make that right.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Cole?
Mr. Chair, just two quick ones. One, if you have a, a right-of-way of twenty feet, and you had some limited drainage on each side of the road, probably going to only allow for a road twelve to fourteen feet, because it does take some property to allow for the drainage because of the, the lower elevation of the drainage, in other words, the V. You can't have drainage without having some way to direct the water. Just, just throwing it in, I've got the same sort of road that you folks live on. Next thing is, is just back to your statement about that you, you did comment about the people attending, and, and I didn't see anything on RVs and, and campers or tents or anything like that, but I did see that your comments, it says the camp attendees have a maximum number of sixty persons, but the attendance has been approximately thirty-five to forty. And then later on, your, the number of visitors on Sunday is fewer than the number of campers. It still looks to me like it allows for about a hundred people could be there at the same time, somewhere from sixty to a hundred. Am I very far off?
Your command of the English language is impeccable, but you, that there, one of the conditions for this permit is that restricts the number of participants to seventy-five, and we're willing to abide by that.
Okay, so we're dealing with seventy-five and the vehicles that would be related to seventy-five?
Correct.
Okay. Of that, then, if we didn't have any campers, RVs and tents, give me a number, some sort of thing. How many tents, how many RVs?
Okay. You might have to define this for me, because I'm not, I'm not a camper. We don't camp. We are fortunate, one of the reasons that we love having the Bible camp there is we get to sleep in a house, in our own bed. But we have, typically, like I said, one year we had two motorhomes.
Okay.
Okay? And then beyond that, we'll have maybe a half dozen tent campers. That's the trailers you pull behind your car that pops up. You saw one in the, if you go to the previous picture, this is most of them right here. So you've got the one trailer there that, that's a pot button, and then most people just like sleeping in a camp. So I would say the most trailers that we've had was six, maybe eight.
Okay, when those folks come to this and they, they pull the camper, do they stay there, or they just use it when they're participating in something there? So do they come and go, or do they stay there?
Well, they set up the camper there for the full four days, and then they come and go in their personal vehicle.
Okay. That, I was just trying to get an idea of the traffic pattern. In other words, to stay there the entire time is a different traffic pattern to me than the folks if they stayed there.
Okay. Did I answer your question?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Cole? Thank you, sir. Next speaker request form we have is from Cole Foster.
I live directly next to Lowell. We share a fence. And some of the pictures, you can actually see my, my shop is in the background, so. Yeah, that's my shop in the background where the horse trailer's at. So, I mean, we, we're really close, so. And the years he's done, I've never had an issue with anybody, they've always been really nice. And as far as the type of campers that I've seen come through, because that's what they do for a living, they'll been small stuff. You can't see in the picture, but just by my shop there, I own a thirty-five-foot motorhome, Class A, that I drive down that road, so. And as far as, I know the camp's coming, when I see Lowell out there for, I would say, at least a week prepping it to make sure it's safe for everybody. He mows, you can see the fence in that picture just beyond the cars, and he mows all the way over with his, a small riding mower, to make sure that it's all cut down for fire safety and things like that, so. So I really don't have much else. I mean, I just, I don't have any issues with it, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Foster? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Last speaker request form we have is, is from Patrick. And is it Brice Meister or Bryce Meister?
Brice Meister.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Good morning, commissioners. Maybe this is a welcome back, but it's good to see you all. I'm here to represent two functions. One, as board of trustee for the Natty Pine Road District, and second is a private homeowner. So can, Cody, can you please bring up those two pictures? Kind of self-explanatory, but just to give you some idea, as part of the road district board, the correct title for this road is a one-lane easement that is part of the Natty Pine Road District for maintenance purposes that allows for public access. So just last time I was here, somebody, I believe Commissioner Jim, said burden of proofs on, on me. Okay? So first thing I wanted to, Chairman, can I ask a question, please, of the planning department?
We typically go off what's in the, in the items here. Just know that if there is a question, we may or may not be able to answer it within, you know, specified timeframe, but go ahead, Lowell.
Well, my question is, in, I gotta put glasses on, sorry. In section six, it says the request for comment, county highway department, highway department has no comment, since this is in the Natty Pine Road District. My question to the planning department is why then wasn't the road district contacted for comments?
I can't speak to that. Did you guys send out a request to the road district?
The road district does not, oh, sorry, Cody, sack, I'm a planner. The road district does not have an email on file, so I called John, who's the president of the road district, and I had no answer.
Okay. So you, you tried to reach out to the president of the road district?
On this request and on the previous request that he was talking, yes. And from the previous request, he said that there was no issues with the road or the requests. Not specifically for this one, I can get in contact with him on this one, but.
Okay.
It's okay, you don't have to. I've, I've discussed it with him. So you, you can clearly see that this is a one-lane road. So I've spoken to the garbage department, I've spoken. So I've spoken to the garbage department, I've spoken to UPS, FedEx, and I have two quotes from 911 Services, otherwise known as the County Sheriff. And from William Christoferson, badge number 2A115, this is a one-lane gravel road, unsafe to go 25. So without wasting anybody more time, Commissioner Jim, have I proven that this is a, from, from a road district board member, have we proven that this is a, a one-lane road? As a matter of fact, we just recently are going through a process where Naughty Pine Road District is getting formal signs put up. 25 mile an hour speed limit, caution signs and stuff. And when they were installing the signs on Stone Ridge Road, I asked them to say, is it possible to get a one-lane sign here? And, well, let me check with my supervisor, because they agreed to, a one-lane road. And lo and behold, supervisor approved the sign that will say one lane. So with, with all of the commission's concerns, which are also the board members of the road district's concerns, we are asking for one additional condition that you add, please. And that is prior to the, to the event that the entirety of Stone Ridge Road gets megwatered. To try and keep the road as in best shape as possible, again, weird, there's no, there's no, Coles don't have an understanding. They're, they're allowing their land to be used by a church. The church runs the camp. So Coles have, they don't know these people. They have no idea if they're going to come in 15 RVs or 15 tents. So in light of that, and to try and keep, and by the way, we don't have any money to fix this road. I mean, we, we have $11,000 budget. So, you know, th- there's no fixing. And to address, can we fall off the road? I would hope that picture depicts that if you fall next to that tree, you ain't coming out of it. And if you fall to the other side, because I put my quad there once, plowing, it took me like five hours to get out of a four-wheel drive quad, to get out of that. So it is not flat, sir. And the narrowest, I, I measured at 13.7, so I'll, I'll go 14.1. But the first half of the road, you can't get two cars. I, I will agree, my back metal, you can get two cars through there, not at 25 miles an hour, not at 10 miles an hour. It is the polite, pull over, let somebody else drive through. So 911 Services, I, I mean, I went to the Rockerville Fire Department, measured that. That's over 10 feet width. So there's no way that that's, you, you couldn't even get two vehicles. You'd have to back up a long way, probably either out on West Heart Ranch Road or in my property to get through. So it is truly a one-lane road. Does everybody agree, can I, can I get for the record, is it a one-lane road?
We're not on, we're not being deposed or anything up here. You, you can come up here and state your, your case, sir, but Jim, you don't need to answer his question specifically.
Sorry.
I, you know, we don't, we don't have a survey of the road to delineate how wide the road is, those types of things. So I think it would be not appropriate for the board to sit here and confirm or deny the facts as you see them.
Can you, can you at least agree that the pictures would show that the, the road's impassable in parts?
There's probably hundreds of miles of Forest Service roads in this, in the Black Hills that I've personally driven on that, I'm assuming this is the worst? Is this the worst case scenario on, on
No.
just this access to Mr. Cole's property?
No, sir.
It's not?
Worst, no, no, the worst is 14.1, right there is, it's 15.7 feet wide.
I'm looking at the picture and I don't understand how the, the, the brown truck on the, the left, the left picture can't move over six inches and, and the passing can happen right there.
As far as, there's a, there's a culvert there.
On the right-hand side?
The, the culvert, see the, see the little sign that Mr. Cole was talking about? That the folks from School of Mines came in? That, that dictates that there is a culvert there. So if we improve the road, there are five culverts on this road. Improving the, and ripping out those culverts because they're not, they're not adequate to handle 20 foot wide.
But they could be extended.
I'm sorry?
They could, you could extend the culvert to widen the road.
Oh, no, because none of those culverts are standard culverts. They were put in by, again, this road is, for intents and purposes, a driveway. So while the culverts, they're not adaptable, they're, they're round circles that are maintained. The road, as Commissioner Johnson pointed out, is not meant for high traffic. Never was, never will be. We don't have the funds to fix it. And if the neighbors think that they want it, they can absolutely go get a quote, go get three quotes. The Board of Trustees will look at it and we'll see what happens. So I think I'm done with my Board of, but you did take the note that we want the, the road district, or we want the road to be megwatered as part of the condition to this. And obviously with Marilyn being the applicant, there's only three of us on the board. I spoke to John, myself, there's the only two people, otherwise she'd be a, on a conflict of interest around voting. So it's, we unanimously voted to have that happen as part of the recommendation. So now I am speaking Patrick Briesmeister as personal resident living here. Going again, on the proposed recommendations, temporary campground for people that operates for only four days. Per your zoning ordinance 314, it states you will provide specific dates. I believe it's, I don't know, like page 112 or 113. And it says the total number of days and hours which assembly and or temporary campground is to last, including starting and ending dates, not days of week, Friday through Tuesday. So again, I ask somebody, can we please note or have the dates for this activity? So we, all the neighbors can plan. And the Sheriff's Department can plan, because I've been working with the Sheriff's Department as, I'm sorry, I shifted over to the, to the board. I'm trying to get them to, to, to make sure people are following the speed limits and so forth. And they're, they're very amenable to that. So do we have a starting date and an end date in July? And my next question is, is the CUP good for the entire month of July? Is that the way it's written? Or will it be written for those specific dates? And can we say the dates now? Because there is a big event similar to this Bible group in, in, in and around Rapid City on the 17th and 18th of July. And I'm just wondering if that's the, the same or a, a subset of that event.
I'll ask, Cody, do you, do you know the specific dates for the event?
So talk about the applicant, he can't speak to a specific date because it's the Bible camp that comes, comes up with that. So I'd have to ask him, usually with these temporary campgrounds like this, it's a one-time, one-year, somebody's doing an event type, type deal. Where this is an actual extended every year type thing. So I don't know how we would be able to address that at this moment in, in time.
So we're not able to specify, specify the dates as required in, in the ordinance, is that correct?
Correct, because it's held every year, so like July 17th, one year, could be on a Friday. Four years from now, it'll be on a Tuesday or Wednesday, which wouldn't correlate with the Friday through Tuesday.
So is it, in order to be in compliance with the ordinance, we could continue this item, the specified date could be established and we could come back to this?
Possibly, yes. As long, we'd have to do something kind of along the lines of like the second or third weekend of, of the month. Because like I said, one date, one year is different than a date. The next, one thing with section 314 is they are required to get a permit every year, a $75 permit, which actually specifically states the date that those would, would be there. So we could have it in there that when he gets the, the permits, that he has to get it a certain time in advance and send letters to neighbors and to emergency services and things.
So do we know for July of 2021, that's my biggest concern? And you're correct that because it automatically, or annually renews, I could get the dates continuously. But just for 2021, I would hope, again, that the third party that's running this on my neighbor's property would have those dates. Per the ordinance 314.
The applicant would be in favor of continuing it for two weeks, though he could get the specific dates for 2021.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
With that being said, I would suggest somebody in this committee actually go to site. So we all know firsthand what that road looks like. And I'll try to do it myself, I won't be on the planning commission next week, but, or next period. But I'll try to make a site visit, Pat. I think we need to get the dates for him. And then you also mentioned that you have to reach out to D N E and R for item number six. See if you can get that pumped on a Monday instead of a Sunday. So there's a lot of things that need to get done.
Correct.
I do have a few more things
Go ahead.
to cover, please. Commissioner Charlie, you, you made a good comment to say, what happens if there's more than 75 people? As a citizen, I, I, it's private property, I can only go so far, I can't count. What, what do we do if there's more than 75 people? How, how do we, what happens? Do I, I, it, it's on the honor system, so it might, it could, it might as well say 200 people, because we don't know. So how, how do, how do I ask for your help in assuring that we adhere to the 75 people?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I was just going, that's, I was going to make a recommendation of Lowell. That's why we had a little conversation there, that we switch number five to be the max, maximum occupancy be limited to 75 people. And that sounded what Lowell wanted to put together with his RVs, his tents, as well as his visitors on Sunday. So he'd have some increase for visitors on Sunday. So I was going to recommend that we change number five to that anyway. Did you get that or do you want me to go back through it again?
You're, you're just saying that number five would be changed to a total occupancy of 75 instead of
Correct, maximum temporary.
delineating it to the campground.
Yeah.
Understood.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Number eight, probably my, my, my biggest concern, fire. Currently, even in the springtime, we are in a moderate to severe drought in the entire county, only to get worse by July. In researching what a 10-pound fire extinguisher is equal to in the amount of water, the five-gallon pail of water, that's, that's the amount that that extinguisher can handle. Mr. Cole has four of them, which is 20 pounds, or 20 gallons of water. But I just raised the question when we've had a, a very severe fire, that in less than an hour, 200 acres were eaten. And, and under blaze. And I, I realize that this is part of section 314, I, I get it. But I, I just ask the commission to please consider, you know, what that means to the neighbors. In addition, I believe section 314 also talks about, this is section 2D, again, number 13, plans for fire protection, including number type and location of protective devices, including extinguishers, which Mr. Cole absolutely did, and the number of emergency fire personnel available to operate equipment. I heard nothing of that in your, in any comment to date. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, fire extinguishers, knock on wood, hopefully never, nobody ever has to use one. But you do have to learn how to use one if you're going to have them with you and have people around. So again, I'm just raising my hand to say to comply with your own 314? What do we do there, please? And, and along with that, and along with the fact of, you know, we're, we're in fire danger now. Item number 10 talks about the temporary camp abides by all state and federal fire regulations. Can we just clearly please state, no fires, no fireworks, no open cooking? We know now that we're, we're in a bind. And I know that, that, I read them, that the state laws do state no fires. But you're, you're asking people that don't live here, that don't even know, we have people living here that don't even know the, the ordinances. And, and I'm just asking as part of the recommendation that we include specifically, no campfires, no fireworks of any kind, not even sparklers. And, and no outdoor cooking. They, in the Coles letter, they do state that all the cooking is either done offsite or in their house. No problem with that. If that's the way it is, but I'd like it to be at least explicit that, that, you know, to, to make it absolutely clear. Okay, I'm done with that page. Now I'm into your magical seven criteria. And it, am I to assume, well, I, I, Commissioner Chair, I need to ask it on the question of the, of the group or the planning department, because it isn't specific here.
If it's for clarification, go ahead.
Is it safe to assume that you're using, since you didn't identify any of the parties that I identified on CU 2104 on March 22nd, that your positions are the same as those positions with regards to value of homes and safety and everything like that? Is that true or?
You're gonna need to explain that a little bit further.
Well, in, in the, what, what I tried to do on March 22nd is explain that the statement of will not be detrimental or endanger public health, safety and general welfare. When I asked the deputy, both deputy sheriffs on Thursday and then this morning, you know, where, where they spend a lot of their time and knock on wood and pray to whoever you like to pray to, that we haven't had an incident. But the United States has had 166 mass shootings. And he said, that's what we're spending a lot of our time. You know, so if you think that, that having a group of, of people, I, I don't care if it's a Bible group or whatever, you're increasing the risk, my risk, of danger. And, and it's
Because of a mass shooting?
Because, because you're bringing people together and, and the fact that anything can happen. People are divided in this country based on politics, religion, gender, you name it. Everybody's got an opinion and an attitude. All I'm saying is you're increasing the risk, just like you're increasing the fire risk, that you bring people together. You don't know what's going to happen, you nor I can't predict that. So to say that the temporary campground in no way will, will bring anybody in personal danger a- as a human, I, I, I would question that because, again, we're, we're, we're coming through a pandemic. There's all sorts of people out there that have interesting ideas and, and things can happen. And again, we're, we're blessed, we don't, South Dakota hasn't had one of these episodes. But I will tell you that your 911 services are preparing and are prepared every day. So I, I, hopefully you'll take that into consideration. The other thing is whether or not this affects the value of, of neighboring properties. And the reason why I ask is the last time I was here, the planning department used the valuation department, department to state that they, they have no, no, I forget the term, but they had no comment whether or not, it wasn't comment, it was, they really can't They really can't tell you whether or not your property value is affected or not. And there's a reason that. Going to the valuation department couldn't tell you that answer. And I quote from the website of Pennington County, South Dakota Equalization and Valuation Department. The function of the office of the equalization department is to annually assess all taxable real real property in Pennington County for tax purposes. Not sale of property, value of property or anything. So I'd like to make sure that on C twenty one oh four and C twenty one eighteen. That. You don't go to the valuation department to get. Or determine if your home is negatively impacted by things in the neighborhood. You actually, and just like if you went to a bank. The bank doesn't say, we'll go to the valuation department and find out, you know, if if we can afford a loan on that. No, you you hire. An appraiser. Similar to the occupation of Commissioner Ron and find out the true sales value of your home and what's positively or negatively affecting the value of your home. So it. Whether it's a B and B. Or whether it's a temporary campground. I would like Commissioner Ron's input of whether or not he he's the expert. Not the valuation department that. That the planning department used. And I guess I'm confused as to why they would do that. But again, somebody said that I didn't bring any proof to say that the value of the homes or the properties are affected. I didn't realize I had to because it's basic. Economics one oh one as far as what what affects property values and what doesn't. But again, I defer to. The expert. If you want to comment, Commissioner Ron, you can, but I know we've had numerous offsite conversations. I know some of you have had numerous conversations. With an appraiser of whether or not these positively or negatively affect values of neighbors. So. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if.
You're not. I'm not going to comment.
Okay. Let's. Talks about. Yeah, she will ask my place. Hold on a second, please. I'm back in order. Thank you. When it when it talks about the campground, starting at four on whatever Friday it is. Can I get clarification, please? Does that mean that the campers? Start coming at four P M. And later? Or does that mean that they can come anytime during that Friday or even? Thursday night or Wednesday night? That. Since the Kolbs aren't the planners of the function, they're just utilizing, you know, that the church may make an exception to say, you know. These people are coming from Florida and, you know, they they're here for the week and they'd like to come a day early or something. Be nice to know.
Pat. Got a question then. Wouldn't it be advantageous to have them spread out over a longer time with your road?
Not really. I I I would prefer them from a road perspective. I'm I'm talking personal, Pat. Now, if you're asking me to.
I'm talking a road.
A road perspective? Absolutely.
You can comment either side of the coin. I don't care. But you ought to stretch them out. Or allow them to stretch them out. If they come at five o'clock in the morning. Would be better than having all of them show up at the same time, four P M. In the afternoon.
That's generally what I want clarification on is what what type of traffic am I going to see? And and, you know. What things do I have to plan around or the neighbors playing around? Because. Of the pictures you see there, whether we have to back up.
Okay, and the second thing with your other hat. Your road is public road. Once you became part of a government entity, you're a public road. You can't decide who has the right, as long as they have a license plate, who drives up and down that road.
I I would agree with you. You are correct.
Thank you.
No, I I said it's a one lane road. Maintenance, but it has public access. Absolutely. No, no. As long as they abide by the speed limits, I don't have a problem with them. So again, I I go back. I highlighted in yellow the mainly kids. First thing that goes off from a safety freak is. Who's watching the kids? If everybody's out on Saturdays and Sundays traveling, I'm sure there's going to be kids that say, no, I just want to sit around and explore. I got thirty acres to explore. And I'm sure none of those kids have access to any matches or anything that flammable. You know, but again, I just raised the fact that eighty five percent of wildfires are started by us, human beings. So I would hope that you would also put that into your. Your process. Those are all the comments I have. Again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions for Mister Briesmeister?
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Based on what he said, and I'm sure what we've already discussed, and I noticed it wasn't in here, Cody, but we have on other ones required them to notify. And you've directed them to the nearest volunteer fire department or fire. That may not be a bad idea for every event like that, especially if it falls within the summer, although the way it's gone, it could be winter too. But at least notify the nearest. Fire. Department that has the coverage so that what would you call them? The first responders, normal first responders, so that they they could be prepared to know where it's at. It may not be a bad condition. We have some time here to do that. You can select the one you want.
Yep, we can add that as a condition for the next.
And thank you, Commissioner Charlie. That was one of my suggestions. I just didn't see it that they at least had a minimum notify Rockerville.
Mister Chairman, weren't we gonna move to delay any voting on this subject?
Move to continue, correct.
Can I move to continue?
Certainly can.
I'd like to make the motion to continue this.
For two weeks? How long?
I don't know how long it will take. A month?
Cody, have you talked to Mister Kolb? Is two weeks acceptable?
Yeah, the applicant said two weeks would be fine. So the May tenth.
May tenth meeting.
I would I'd I'd say that continuum should focus on items five and six. Or conditions five and six.
Noted.
I'd like to just make my point again, though, to have the staff give some consideration to.
Just for point of order. I'm very sorry. We'll come back to you. There was a motion made. You said, let's hang on on or focus on five and six, but there was no second, so.
Okay.
So motion and second, further discussion, please continue.
I I guess I'd just like to make my point again for you to the staff to think about. Adding a condition that's that stipulates the maximum number of camping units. And in in listening to the discussion, I'll add another reason to my thinking on that. And that is that. It's they're easier to count than people. And if there if there is concern. That there's not going to be any oversight on the number of people. Then it's just a lot easier to count the number of tents and campers than than people. So. I I'd just like to consider, you know, discussing this with the applicant and coming up with a reasonable number and thinking about adding that.
Noted. Further discussion.
Mister Chair, relative to the number of people. I think it's important to identify how that is going to be inventoried. We can say seventy five, we can say eighty, but there's got to be some methodology or some technique in place. To guarantee that that's the number. So somebody's got to, you know, service the police force on this or make sure that that is that condition's followed.
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
So should we have somebody from the planning department go out there and count those people? Or should we just rely on Mister Kolb? I I hate to see this kind of thing. The the perfect becomes the enemy of the good. This has been going on for three years. There have been no fires. There have been no shootings. There have been no. Difficulties on the road that required wreckers or special vehicles. The reality is we're making Mister Briesmeister makes much more out of this than 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 it is. And I think some of these. Suggestions that have been raised, like maybe we should have a specific date. That makes sense, of course. But to a large extent, I regrettably, I I think Mister Briesmeister simply opposed to having anybody. At any time within several hundred yards of his property. He's opposed to gatherings and. I'm sorry, but we it's incumbent upon us to protect that right to assemble. And we cannot restrict it to the point where there will never be. A difficult moment. We just can't do that. Otherwise, we wouldn't have anything. And I'm probably of anybody on here, an enthusiast. For safety and consumer protection and all those things when we talk about some of these issues. But I just hate to see this degenerate into this kind of discussion. I mean. I think Mister Kolb has made a genuine effort and we have to remember. That. Life is filled with some risk and we are not, in my judgment, suggesting any kind of dangerous risk here. By basically approving what has been suggested. Anyway, that's just my feeling. I'm very frustrated by by this this whole. Event.
Mister Chair, before Colin gives us a good direction. I guess I I understood and I proposed the limited temporary occupancy of of seventy five. We we walk in and out of buildings all day long, folks, that already has occupancy on it that get violated from the. The civic center downtown to everything else. They have extra people, but because of the immense danger of the amount of people. I do not believe seventy five people warrants standing there and counting headcount. So, but I do believe that when they know it's seventy five and that's the condition, then those folks do the best they can to control it. And in the future are going to come back to us and say, we can't believe it was seventy five. On the following year. We're going to look at this again next year. So I'm just proposing seventy five is a nebulous number. And I know that, but it was it came from the gentleman and I's conversation of this event. And probably going to have to be continuing to look at it in the future. Thank you, Colin. I'm sorry to you.
Go ahead, Colin.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Commissioner Johnson, to your point. As far as the number of people who are in attendance, there are quite a few occupancy restrictions and there's nobody at the planning department who's there. At those buildings throughout the county. I think it's up to the applicant to enforce that. And if anybody else has any issues, then they should call the planning department's ordinance enforcement. And Dwayne and then I can deal with that. But I think to have somebody posted there would. Go against what this commission and I think the county commission has done as well throughout the entire county. It would take somebody away from their job. Doing planning. Items. And I don't think it's necessary under any of the ordinances or state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion and sure there's it's going to be continued. Please, please, please come up. Make it brief, please.
Absolutely. The reason why there was no complaint is because they didn't have a conditional use permit to let us know that they were doing this in the first place. How do we know? That they're having these assemblies? Did we know that people? They have the right to have people come to their property. We didn't know that it was an organized thing until Marilyn brought it up because we're on the same committee group. So to answer, so to answer, you you are correct. It is it is private property. I don't have a fence around my perimeter of my property to say, stay out. So I'm going to protect my rights as best I can. And I hope you understand that you're you're property owner too. So when you have an easement coming through your property and people abuse it. You get a little sensitive. And last time we spoke, you don't know me from Adam. You don't know where I've traveled or what I've done. So when I express my peace and quiet. That's a that's a sacred right to me. So I totally respect what you say and appreciate what you say and and your opinion is your opinion. But my right as a homeowner and a and a property owner is the same as well. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, just one more thing, and then I'd like that, in other words, a condition fifteen also added to their review before they come back here. In the two weeks regarding notification of the nearest fire department. And make that kind of a standard policy, but that's my own feeling. It's up to you guys.
Thank you, Cody. Did you have anything to add?
Uh, no.
Okay, further discussion? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this before we continue it? Hearing non seen non motion is to continue conditional use permit twenty one eighteen to the May. I had it written down, May tenth. Thank you, meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And I would. Entertain a motion for a ten minute recess.
So moved.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye, or recess for. Ten minutes. All right. I think everybody is back. We will call the the meeting back to order. And I believe that we are on item fifteen.
Can we get a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene. Sorry about that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Here we go, fifteen.
Okay, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item fifteen is vacation and plat VP twenty one dash zero three. It's to vacate notes on a plat for lot one, block two of Mountain Meadows subdivision. The applicant and owner are Scott and Terry Sauner. Currently, the property is thirty acres on Plank Unit Development District. Staff is recommending approval of vacation of plat VP twenty one dash zero two with two conditions. We look at some criteria when vacating a plat. Number one is the property zoned appropriately, yes. Number two, already subdivision regulation variance is required, yes. Have you met? Have they met the required subdivision regulation variance is obtained? This is check no. The answer is actually yes, they did obtain them at the time of the staff report. They they hadn't. Does the property require percolation test and soil profile information? Yes. Is the property in the area of porcelain and risk for water contamination? Yes. Is there a possibility of high fire danger in there? Yes. Could vacating the note on the plat impact neighboring properties? Yes. And does the entire subdivision have access to water from Rushmore Ranch Estates? No. The lot is currently vacant. Many structures. The applicants did obtain the subdivision regulation variance to waive water storage requirements that will go with items or notes thirteen and fourteen. A little history on the subdivision. Mountain Meadows was was plotted back in two thousand eight on the plat. They put notes. For developing the properties. Eight and or note seven and nine talk about having. Two suitable onsite wastewater treatment system areas being identified with accompanying percolation tests and profile holes from a certified engineer. Since this has been, since this was plotted, the county has adopted two oh four J, which addresses. Percolation profile holes within the office. So those notes are no longer in staff's recommendation needed. And notes thirteen and fourteen state that after sixty five building permits have been issued, that surety needs to be increased or surety needs to be posted. And that after the eightieth building permit, ninety five thousand gallons of water need to be. Available for Rushmore Ranch. And Mountain Meadows subdivision. The Board of Adjustment waived the requirements for water storage, so those notes can be vacated as well. So again, staff is recommending approval of vacation of five V B twenty one dash zero two with two conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ron.
You're high. So if you look at the highlighted, what I have. Should eight and twelve be highlighted?
Uh, no, this was sorry. This was actually taken from. This was, sorry, this was actually taken from a different request where they were requesting to vacate notes seven or eight and twelve. The applicants have agreed to put in a ATU unit, so they are not requesting to vacate number eight, and they have agreed to put in a sprinkler system. So number twelve is not needed.
So if we go through this again in the future, it might want to.
Yep, that'll change it. Yep. Sorry about that.
Charlie.
Page three, item number one, towards the bottom there, note seven and nine. Looks like you, the laptop quit spitting out words at the last sentence. Therefore, the staff would be in favor of a blank.
In favor of vacating those notes. Of vacating notes seven and nine.
My only question is, as I read this, and I think to myself, are, how many other lots are there that are, that are open, that are going to want to come in and get the exact same thing, the exact same notes in the plat not apply to them? And how, and at what point in however many of those come forward, does it make sense to increase the water storage, fire storage, that kind of thing?
That would be up to, to the board of adjustment to deny a variance for the water storage.
Sure.
Staff recommended denial of the variance, but the board of adjustment approved it. So there'd be, up to the board of adjustment to deny the variance, and up to the water, the water association to come in and say that water needs to be added if they want to build on those.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Originally, the developer was going to probably do between fifty and sixty lots. So when Arlith did this, I think that reflects fifty to sixty lots. Right now, there's seven lots, I believe. And so that's why we kind of backed off a little bit because it's not, what you see there is not what was intended to be. And so the plat, in fact, I've met with a fiscal engineer, and they said in the future they recommend that we don't do this to plats because it's, it's not detailed enough. It's general, and you can, you can look at it a lot of different ways.
Thank you. Further questions for staff on this item? Okay. Staff is recommending approval of vacation plat VP twenty-one dash zero-two with two conditions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen is major plan unit development amendment PU twenty-one oh seven to remove the subject property from the plan unit development in order to rezone to Ranchat Residential. And staff is recommending to continue plan unit development PU twenty-one dash zero-seven to the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion to continue PU twenty-one dash zero-seven. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen is rezone RZ twenty-one dash thirteen to rezone thirty acres from plan unit development district to Ranchat Residential District. And staff is recommending to continue rezone RZ twenty-one dash thirteen to the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting.
I just realized that when I saw that.
Staff is recommending to continue rezone item seventeen, RZ twenty-one dash thirteen to the May twenty-fourth planning commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen is a conditional use permit amendment CU twenty dash eighteen to amend an existing conditional use permit to amend the surety requirements for utility scale solar system. Wild Springs Solar LLC obtained a conditional use permit for a hundred and twenty-eight megawatt solar energy generating system and associated hundred and fifteen kilowatt transmission line. The project is located approximately one half mile south and west of the city of New Underwood. This project will transmit solar energy from the project substation to the Point of Interconnect. The Point of Interconnect will be the WAPA substation south of New Underwood. This project will utilize typical photovoltaic panels, central heaters, and linear access tracking system. The applicant anticipates construction will commence in the fall of twenty twenty-one and end by the twenty twenty-two. They are requesting the change to condition number twenty-five. The current condition reads that a letter of credit or cash surety bond in the amount of two point three two three million be submitted for the decommissioning of the solar modules. If a letter of credit is submitted, it is to be reviewed on a yearly basis, and the decommissioning cost estimate be submitted after ten years of operation. And if the cost estimate of the decommissioning is more than two point three two three million, the surety bond estimate must meet the most current estimate. Since this, the CUP was approved for this, they have gone through the permitting requirements with the PUC, and they have obtained approval from the PUC. So they would also like to have this, the county and the PUC basically be joint beneficiaries on any kind of surety or bond. So they are requesting a change to that condition specifically to read once the project's design is finalized. Wild Springs must prepare and submit an updated decommissioning cost estimate to Pennington County prior to commencement of construction. Wild Springs shall provide a surety bond in the total amount of the updated commissioning cost estimate naming the South Dakota PUC, and Pennington County as beneficiaries. Further, Wild Springs must provide an updated decommissioning cost estimate to Pennington County at the completion of a ten-year operation and every five years thereafter. And Wild Springs must adjust the financial surety provided to align with the updated cost estimate. So staff did incorporate those requirements into the conditions and added, instead of twenty-six conditions for this conditional use permit, there's twenty-eight conditions addressing the requests from Wild Springs. And Wild Springs is also on Zoom if you have any questions for them. So staff is recommending approval with the twenty-eight condition.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. Just one second. I got only twenty-six conditions, just procedural.
There should be twenty-eight. They're just numbered. Yeah.
Down twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-eight. Got it. Go ahead, Charlie. Sorry.
You know the strange things that go through my head, see, over reading these things sometime. It occurred to me that we're the final port of call, so to speak, on conditional use permits in the decision process. In other words, when we commit, the counties commit. And what concerned me was whether really we have the authority to commit the county to a joint surety agreement when it becomes between the state and the county. In other words, do we have that sort of authority? It crossed my mind. I realize we do in the conditions, but it would appear to me the county commissioners would still review that because they're the ones that have to call this, the surety at some point, don't they?
Correct. They are the ones that call the surety. And I do know that Colin McNeese has been working with the attorney from Wild Springs on that very question.
Colin McNeese, State Attorney's Office. Commissioner Johnson, to your question, I think if you look in the particular section of this, which I think is three sixteen, three seventeen, there's a specific provision that discusses sureties. And my review of it as well, as well as the review of the PUC, I think that there's sufficient, I think it's okay to basically share input to whether Pennington County and the PUC.
I don't oppose this, but I could see at least the commissioners then wouldn't have to run for reelection, having voted for this. Follow me. There's really, this is a big commitment when you're talking about under a surety-type situation on who's named, who are the named parties. I worked with it many years, and I'm just really surprised that a volunteer, basically a volunteer-type commission would have the authority, especially of this size, what, four million, something like that, joint. I don't have any problems with the joint situation with the state or the county. I'm just saying, who approves that? If it was just us, and through the CUP, the way our ordinances are written, I would agree entirely. I just had some question when you do it together.
Well, Commissioner Johnson, when you look at the zoning ordinance, the specific section that deals with alternative energy sources has a specific provision relating to sureties. And that controls, the board of county commissioners, I don't know when, but delegated the authority to determine CUPs to the planning commission.
Sure did.
When they made that decision.
That provision also flopped over.
Yeah. So because it's a, what, three seventeen, three sixteen, that gave, that vested this commission with the authority to decide that because it's in the specific ordinance that deals with that, the specific section.
Thank you.
Further questions on this item? Is there any questions for the applicants on, that are on a Zoom call?
I'd just, I'd like to ask Brittany one.
Go ahead.
Brittany, I just want, just to make sure that I am understanding this. So the old condition twenty-five now really has become three conditions, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Correct. Because the way that they had written their, written, excuse me, their proposal, it really should have been broken out into three separate.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah. And so there's really no more, nothing that's been additionally added. But on our copy, condition twenty-eight hasn't, it still says twenty-six.
Right, it should be twenty-eight.
So that's been fixed, yeah. Okay. Very good.
Further questions? Hearing none, seeing none. There is the applicant on the Zoom call. If you have no, anything to add, Ms. Smith, then we'll vote on this. Or do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add as long as you don't have any questions. Thank you for asking.
Just for the record, shouldn't she state who, who is on the Zoom?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
This is Molly Smith with Fredrickson and Byron. I'm outside counsel for Wild Springs and assist with permitting. Also on is Melissa Schmidt, also with Wild Springs.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie, for the reminder. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU twenty dash eighteen with twenty-eight conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nineteen.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item nineteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-six. It's to amend section five oh seven I five B construction permit requirements of the zoning ordinance, to amend and supersede the pre-existing section five, five oh seven I five B construction permit, permit requirements. Currently, as the ordinance reads, it says applicants of stormwater permits must notify all budding owners of the subject property of the pending application and construction permit activity. Staff is recommending to change it to applicants of the stormwater permits must notify all budding property owners of the subject property of the pending application and construction activity if the disturbance is greater than or equal to five acres. The purpose of the amendment is, staff has received very few calls on smaller projects, and most of the calls that we received were confused on why they were receiving the letter and what, what they were receiving it for. They didn't have any comments on the actual request that the applicants had. The requirement is also on property owners doing small projects such as homes and can hold up the building permit review process. And staff feels that the notice requirement would be better suited for larger construction projects with, with more significant land disturbance. So staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-six.
Thank you. Questions for Cody?
Oh, Cody. So what was the previous thing? There was no limitation whatsoever?
No. The previous one was if you applied for a stormwater permit, which requires, permits required at ten thousand square feet. So if you're disturbing ten thousand square feet, you had to send notice requirements to all budding neighbors. That can get pretty onerous for a small contractor just building a, building a house. So we feel like it'd be better suited for larger-scale projects.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just so you know that this can get abused. There's one up in my area. The folks said on their permit application, they were moving dirt for, I believe, for a storage building, cold storage building, if I remember right. And they're still developing the lake that they put there. That, that sort of bothered me when we're talking smaller projects. In other words, we've got to, as a staff, be able to recognize when people are pulling our lake. And this one surely cleared. I've had every, every person I know ask me about how a lake appeared there. And I'm surprised somebody downstream didn't go to the feds about it. But it didn't happen. It's there. They even put liner in it last year because the water ran out. So they spent many thousands of dollars, and they're still developing a lake that fell under this exact item. Because why wouldn't you? Well, the one thing you have to know is if somebody's going to disturb that big area and move that much dirt, you can't build on it again. You can't put concrete on it for a long time. And so if they're applying for a permit to build a building at that time, our staff needs to know they aren't going to put concrete on it. They're doing something else with the dirt. They're just moving. Okay. Thank you.
How'd you pick five acres?
That's just what we figured was a good number. If the planning commissioner or the board think a lower number would be adequate, that...
Here's my thought. Before, it was ten thousand square feet, which is a quarter of an acre. And that, that is very close to, let's say, a residential building site on the smaller side. You know, you would disturb that much. However, I would be surprised if someone building a house would, you know, on a larger lot, need to disturb more than an acre or two acres. And so maybe we're splitting hairs here a little bit. I was just curious how you got to five acres instead of choosing maybe one or two.
Sure. Part of the reason, too, is a lot of the big disturbances are the big developments, like Murphy Ranch Estates, some other bigger developments. So when they have to notify, I think that's more appropriate in the sense of these smaller ones because it really is holding up the building permit process quite a bit. At an acre, then that triggers them to have to go to the state DE and R and get DE and R permits, too. Um, we don't see a lot. We either see under an acre or we see way over an acre. I mean, that's kind of our, you know.
I, I, I'm okay moving forward with this. And if it needs to be revisited, then the county can revisit it. But these are my, my opinions.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. Five acres seem splendidly large to me, but I realize the difficulties on these kinds of things. You are just, and I think your point that most of them are either bigger or they're demonstrably smaller. So we'll ride with it, maybe.
Go ahead.
So just to give me a sense, I mean, I know really what an acre is and five acres, but I'm thinking of the Rockerville disturbance now where the developers putting in the water lines and the, where the tank is going to go and, and the, for the wastewater system and so on. Would that, would, would that be a five-acre disturbance? Okay.
And just so I'm a hundred percent clear, the requirements for the stormwater permit with respect to ten thousand square feet or the cubic yardage that gets moved is still, still remains, they still have to do that. This is simply the notification to the neighbors.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-six. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty.
Item twenty is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash zero-seven to amend section two oh two official zoning map of the zoning ordinance, to amend and supersede the existing section two oh two official zoning map. The reason for this amendment is to incorporate the official current zoning map and incorporate language regarding planned unit development zoning into section two oh two.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So Brittany, if I look at a zoning map, I'm going to see dark blue, and that'll be the way the property was zoned prior to two twenty-four, twenty-one.
Correct. That's the planning and developments.
So then the guidelines for that PUD would go back into the PUD itself in your files, and there's stipulations there, too.
Correct. That zoning district will exist, and they, and we are working on section two sixteen, so they'll still be able to do amendments and do the things that they need to do. You just won't be able to rezone to that district.
The difference is if you might have suburban residential after two twenty-four, twenty-one, and it's a PUD, but it's not, it's going to be zoned suburban residential with a PUD overlay.
That would be moving forward, and that's in the next section. Yes.
So, okay.
Questions on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one dash zero-seven. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash zero seven to amend comprehensive plan view to twenty forty, section three point one land use designations and standards and land use description, plan unit development and to add section three land use and housing element figure three dash two official zoning map, page three dash sixteen to the Pennington County's existing comprehensive plan. Uh, the reason for this comprehensive plan amendment is to incorporate the official zoning map as page three dash sixteen and figure three dash two of Pennington County's view to twenty forty comprehensive plan and to update the language regarding plan unit developments in section three point one. Um, currently, as the language reads in, um, section three point one regarding plan unit developments, it does not discuss the actual overlay being, um, part of that. So that's what that changes is to actually incorporate that language specifically under that zoning district.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
One question doesn't hold anything in, in, in abeyance of this. Have, why have we never considered a commercial type PUD? You know, laying it out and it'd take quite a bit of planning to do that. But again, it falls under planning so that we could have a little future look for developers that would wanna come here. I think we, we're getting more national type exposure from a commercial viewpoint. And there are developers that wouldn't want to go in there just in one specific zoning thing. They would like, uh, to be able to put a plan together with you and, and file it. Is that something that's, that you guys are looking at now on the road or just hasn't it come up before?
Um, it hasn't come up before and actually under our commercial, industrial and highway service districts, there is no limitation to the number of, um, structures or, um, principal uses. So you could have multiple, multiple principal uses in that, um, commercial district. So if it's under one ownership and they wanna have several buildings, let's say several strip malls in that area, that doesn't, our zoning district now does not preclude that from happening.
So if they had uses that would flop over into improper zoned things, they would have to get it rezoned.
Correct, if it didn't meet the, the commercial zoning district or highway service or industrial, they could have multiple principal uses, um, or used by rights under those districts. Now, if they start getting into conditional uses under those, then, um, that would be.
I just received help me, that's a help for investors, it, it would appear to me, to have some type of commercial setup that's a, uh, a unit development type of thing.
So when we do the, uh, amendment to section two sixteen, um, that might be a consideration. And then through that amendment, we'd have to amend this section again of the comprehensive plan because it says allowed uses, we'd have to add commercial development as one of those.
I'm just thinking of the, the governmental things or the free, pre-access things, roads, parking, all sorts of things, uh, fire, uh, prevention, the, the water pumping, all sorts of things that would help an individual developer. So when he goes back to his financier, he's got this put together and, and it's all approved by us and the, the relative boards of authority. Thank you. I, I, I just had a question why we never went that direction.
And, and to be honest, most of the commercial development we do see in those kind of districts are the resort type developments and those are covered in here. Um, so those, most of those would fall under the resort development where they have that whole, you know, they have camping sites, they have a general store, they have a restaurant, they have those types of things. So that falls under that, uh, resort development.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Hearing none, seeing none, uh, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash zero seven. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one planning commission. One item to note that they did, um, concur with the planning commission's recommendation for preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash zero six for Grandview Land LLC, Dan Lewis and Gordon Howie, um, that was denied.
Seeing no items from the public, um, items from staff. No items from staff, items from the membership.
Mr. Chairman, I will be out of town May tenth, so the next meeting I will not be in attendance.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think I'll be here May tenth either.
You what? I'm sergeant.
Pardon?
What did you say?
He's gonna be gone May tenth too.
I don't think I'll be here. I'm sorry. Here's my little advice. Uh, I, I'm not certain, but I'm pretty certain, so.
Will you be here, Kathy?
Yes.
All right. Well, that leaves, cause we have to have four, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
And normally I wouldn't be, but that, that auction falls right between there, so I'll be here for both meetings at each end. Now, my wedding anniversary, no, I'm skipping that.
The anniversary or your meeting?
You gotta do what you gotta do, Charlie. Um, any other items from the membership? Item twenty-six is adjournment. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none in the chamber, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.